Pretty quiet. Phone not vibrating, and I trust everybody is all reading the same thing. Okay, my call for this meeting, Cannon Beach Planning Commission to Order. Is there an objection to approve the agenda?
I knew that we approved the agenda.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Lundie?
Yes.
Does anyone have any additions or corrections to either of the sets of minutes? Okay, is there an objection to approve the minutes?
I think I'll just have thirty minutes.
Certainly.
And actually, rather than having you probably like, my understanding of the new instructions that we got about holding city planes is that if there's something like that, we can just do it by consensus. So, if there are no objections, go ahead.
I have to abstain because it wasn't here.
Noted. Everybody else agree with consensus?
Yes.
Okay. And I will probably remember to do the same thing with the agenda also.
We should cut through the minutes.
You didn't have any additions or corrections to the minutes, did you?
Well, there was a whole bunch of typos.
Well, right.
Oh, no.
Close the video, right?
I think Google said six o'clock now, by the way.
Okay, that's right. I forgot, I was looking at my watch, which I only update once in a while. Okay, first, I have to finish. This is a Quayside Judicial Public Hearing regarding Cannon Beach Academy Request for a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Public Charter School at 3781 South Hemlock. CU 1702. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow public charter school at 3781 South Hemlock. The property is owned by the City of Cannon Beach and described as map 50032CC, tax lot 400. The property is in residential high-density R3 zone. Municipal Code Section 17.16.030 standards states a public school requires a conditional use permit in an R3 zone. The request will be reviewed against Municipal Code Section 17.80.110, conditional uses overall use standards. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias?
I'm not sure if I do or not, but I thought I'd put it up. My staff unit is on board for the academy.
Okay, does anybody believe that this makes Dr. Burke inappropriate to be taking part in decisions like that? I think that's all I need to do, right? Okay, as long as so, okay. Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts? Does any commission member may decide? Is there a staff report?
Yes, this is a conditional use permit from the academy at a different location than the one you heard in January. The criteria are the same, the location's different, so I'm not going to drill down on some of the details, really. But if it is substantially different permit, because it's in a substantially different location. The other thing that's a little different about this is this is a city-owned building now. From the children's center was there, the city owned the land, the children's center, which was a nonprofit, owned the building. When the children's center holded its tent, the city ended up in ownership of that building. It's been dark ever since. The academy approached the city relatively recently about using that, and because it kind of was late in the cycle, we managed to get it on your agenda. There's kind of some, if you see signs of haste here, you're not mistaken. We had to put this together pretty quick to get it before you at your meeting tonight. There are other moving pieces on to this project that you don't need to rule on, but you probably need to know about them just for context. The city is still in the process of negotiating a lease with the academy for the building. And we are still working with the academy on sort of building permit-related issues, mostly driving the interior of the building and some exterior modifications. Those exterior modifications, so remember, are the purview of the design review board. I don't know what those are yet, but I've tentatively scheduled this for the July DRB meeting, in case they do need exterior modification approval. So those are things you don't have to rule on, but you should be aware that that's kind of happening in the background and might explain some of the things you read in the staff report here tonight. That said, I believe, based on what I know of it and what we have in the application materials, they hit all the numerical requirements for parking, things like that. The proposal in front of you is what they want to do in an existing building. You have a revised large-scale site plan in front of you that was submitted today. I haven't gone over it in detail, but it looks similar to what we've been working with all along here. The, this is subject to the 120-day rule. We have until toward the end of September to work on this permit. I don't think the applicant has that much time, though. This is also subject to the requirements in ORS 197763. If anybody asks for a continuance at this hearing, it should be the first evidentiary hearing. It's a mandatory grant. If we get to that point, we should talk about how you want to schedule that in terms of, typically you continue these to the next meeting. There is a faster way to do it, but it may involve you meeting in an intermediate date somewhere out there. So if that request comes forward, we should put the brakes on and figure out exactly what you want to do on that, but you would have to grant the request at least for seven days. With that, from everything I've seen on this, I would recommend approval, unless you hear something different at the hearing.
Any questions? Any additional correspondence that we don't know about?
The big site plan is the only thing that's coming late.
This is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff reports, unless you don't have criteria sheets next to the rest door. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to conclusion of the evidentiary hearing, as Mr. Barnes mentioned, to any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. Planning permission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, argument, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, say their phone ring, or mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
My name is David Veneta. I'm with Tollavan Architects, and I've been working with the charter school for actually probably four or five years now. So yeah, I would guess I would be representing them in my testimony.
And what's your mailing address?
Uh, yeah. 368 Elk Creek Road, Cannon Beach, 97110.
Your mailing?
Oh, mailing, post office box 648 Tollavan Park, 97145. So you got both. When Mark mentioned that we're working rapidly on this, he was absolutely right. In fact, I just wanted to update you on a meeting we had this morning with the building department, actually. And because there was initially a study done of the building commissioned by the city to just kind of assess the, the condition of the building. And what we found is that generally, the building is very sound, even though it's been vacant for, what, three years now? It's in generally good condition. What is going to happen, just so you know, is Coaster Construction is going to be retained to work for the academy on their behalf with the minor remodeling that needs to occur to the building. In meeting with Bob Mitchell and Alton, I'm not sure of Alton's last name.
Butler.
Butler, our new building official, this morning, we went over the scope of what they saw needed to be done to the building. It's mainly involving life-saving improvements. And as probably you guys are aware, building codes are always being updated every two years, actually. And so, there's such things as exit lights, egress lighting that needs to be improved. There's panic hardware that needs to be installed on the doors. But essentially, there will be no external improvement impact to the building whatsoever. So, as a part of the design review process that Mark referred to, you may have to go through, I doubt seriously there's going to be anything more than a minor modification. In other words, there may be a door swing in now that needs to swing out, that kind of thing. So, the improvements are absolutely minor in nature. And I will let the academy talk about, more about their program, but I can tell you, after an initial walkthrough with the folks from the academy, it really suits their program to a T. There's very, there's no wall removals, there's no building additions contemplated, fresh coat of paint, and some new finishes, and they're going to be in business. So that's what we're shooting for, and I just want to kind of give you that update on my meeting this morning. So, any questions? You happy to help?
I was curious, this is minor, maybe a minor issue, but on the tsunami exit gate?
Yeah.
So, I didn't walk around to take a look at that. Is that something that is maintained by the city?
Well, you know, that's curious, and the reason we labeled it as such is that it is actually got a sign on it that labels, identifies it as a tsunami exit gate. Yeah, and so that's why we conveyed it here. It's nothing more than a cyclone gate that allows the children or occupants to exit from the building and to higher ground. I didn't really look at the exit hardware or how it's locked, but obviously, that playground area needs to be secured for the, you know, safety of the children. But at some point, I would guess that a teacher, you know, supervisor would be able to open that gate, and the children wouldn't be able to tamper with it in the meantime. So, but yeah, that's, it's actually labeled as tsunami exit gate.
Do you have any idea what the elevation is of the building?
Yeah, Mark, didn't we look into it? It's something around 45 feet? I know it's, yeah.
Don't want to hazard a guess, I can't remember.
That number sticks. Forty to forty-five feet is, yeah. This is actually, in terms of tsunami inundation, in a much better location than the previous, I can tell you that. So, yeah.
I didn't look back to see, if I remember correctly, they're anticipating that they're going to have three classrooms?
Yes.
They're going to have one, but it's probably.
That's my understanding correct, yes.
It doesn't look as though it's laid out through that at the moment.
No.
Missing something?
No, there's actually going to be a partition. If you, if you look at the wording on the site plan that says New Cannon Beach Academy, there's, there's going to be, as I understand it, and folks here from the academy can answer that better than I can, but they're anticipating a partial high partition between the grades, dividing that larger space at the north end of the building into two separate classrooms.
Looking at your windows, that was looking, how I would have expected to be.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I meant.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, yeah.
In reading through the materials that I sent away this week, I noticed that there much was made of there not being a school bus, but people dropping their children off. To you, is it, is it expected that people are going to drive into this parking area and let the children off there, or let the children off on Hemlock, so they walk in?
No, I would, I would venture to guess that they would actually come into the parking lot, turn, turn around in the parking space and exit from there. Yeah.
I'm envisioning a traffic jam.
Well, they very well could be, I mean, certainly in the morning, there'd be drop I think that's the way the previous school operated, if I understand correctly, and it seemed to somehow survive.
They did have more space, I think, and openings to open.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there presentations by proponents?
Amy Moore, the director of the Cannon Beach Academy, PO Box 323 Seaside, Oregon. And I will comment on some of the questions that you had as well for Dave. We recognize that there may be some haste in this, as Mark had mentioned, and in the application, and we apologize for the timeline. However, as Mark also mentioned, we have made a request for conditional use application before, actually on two previous occasions, and the only difference is the location for this is on Hemlock instead of Sunset. So, everything else would be identical. On behalf of, speaking of the class, of the space in the, in the school, the first year we would have two classrooms, but one would be a kindergarten space and one would be a first and second grade blend. We would have a kitchen and an eating area, and as well as the play space outdoors and the existing office space. And then, in the second year, we would have kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And then the third year, it would be kindergarten, one, two, and three. So there would be up to four classrooms using those partitions, as David mentioned. And speaking to the, the traffic concern, our students will have a half an hour window of time where they are able to arrive at school, where staff will be supervising them. So between 7:30 and 8:00 are when parents can drop students off, and the same in the afternoon as well. So hopefully, that'll alleviate some of the traffic congestion. Any questions?
Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there presentations by other proponents? Are there, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. My name is Lisa Knopfle, PO Box 843 Cannon Beach. I have lived here for 23 years, and have been coming here for 33. During this time, I've seen a lot of changes. A big change in our local community was the closing of our Cannon Beach Elementary School. This sweet school brought our community together. We had volunteers of all ages who wanted to give back to our children. There were activities like Celebration of Arts, where local artists taught children different art techniques; Cinco de Mayo, where our Hispanic community could share their culture. Our Christmas program was shared by many people. It was a tradition for even, for some, even if they no longer had a child attending the school. The program was a great way to begin the holiday season. Young families have moved away because there is no longer a school. We have had a shortage of volunteer firefighters and employees for our local businesses. Children help, pardon me, children helped to keep a community vibrant and fun. As a community, we have been working on reopening the school for four years. Our generous townspeople have given money and their precious time to this project. We have been passionate and refused to give up. We believe having an elementary school in Cannon Beach is what's best for our children and our town. I have been blessed that all three of my children have attended Cannon Beach Elementary School. The love and support that they've received has been priceless. A quote that I love is "It takes a village to raise a child." Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have some documentation of the fact that there were people who actually said that, or a reason that they moved away, or that, or what, was because we no longer had an elementary school in Cannon Beach?
Well, I do know of families that have actually talked to me and told me that. Do I give, can I give you a name? Is that appropriate? Burke and Corey Burnett? I don't think it's appropriate to ask. Oh, sorry. And I could give some other ones.
If we, they, you could.
Okay, well, anyway, yeah, and I've also talked to another family that was willing, you know, that was helping us in the beginning, and she said she was not going to move here. And she was helping with a garage sale that we were having, and she took her family out of the area. So, anyway.
And also that this has had an impact on our emergency personnel, fire.
Volunteer?
Yeah.
Volunteer firefighters? Yes, I've heard from many people that have talked to me about how they're having a shortage with volunteer firefighters.
I'm not, I'm wearing the badge. I'm, I'm not trying to quarrel with you, I just wanted to make sure that you could support that if it comes to that.
Maybe you could talk to the fire chief, and he could tell you about that.
Chair Lundie, is, is, I may not misunderstand what this hearing is about. Isn't it about whether or not they can, not whether or not there should be a charter school? I think we've already decided that.
Yeah.
At previous meetings, I think that's a done deal.
Okay.
And now we're talking about whether or not to go in this.
Yes, okay.
Well, I'm just, I'm hoping you consider it, because it's been, we've really worked hard. I mean, it's, we've given up a lot of time.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Is there a staff response?
No.
And the applicant or proponent wish to say anything more at this moment? Then, as far as I'm aware, at this point, the hearing is not being continued, so I'm closing. Any reason not to close the public hearing? So we move to consideration.
I make a motion to approve this application.
I.
Okay, since there's some discussion.
I just want to say that I rented the house so my daughter could go to school here. I know you don't want me to say that, but, yeah, it's a very important thing.
Any other discussion? Any reason we should not move to a vote? Okay, Commissioner?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Lundie?
Yes. Okay. Okay, if there are people who were here for that and are not interested in the setback issue that we're going to discuss next, we'll take a momentary pause for me. I believe I'm not trying to chase anybody out. Okay, the next order of business is also a Quayside Judicial Public Hearing. In this case, regarding, in consideration of SR 17-03 Henderson et al., request for a setback reduction in conduct in conjunction with a remodel at 163 West Orford. SR 17-03. The applicant requests a setback reduction to permit a 1.6-foot rear yard setback in conjunction with increasing the roof height of an existing dwelling. The property is located at 163 West Orford, tax lot 2201. May, is that right? And May 41006 B.C.
Map?
Map.
Tybo, map.
I thought, what is that supposed to say? Map 41006 B.C., and is inter-residential modern and city R3 zone. Municipal Code Section 17.82.020 standards requires a rear yard setback of at least 15 feet. The request will be reviewed against the Municipal Code Section 17.64.010, setback reduction provisions established. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time?
Yes.
Yes. I'll object to hearing at this, at this particular time. I, I'm just here to object, I'm an opponent versus a proponent of this.
That'll, that'll come up.
Okay, okay.
Does any commission member believe he or she has a conflict of interest? Does any commission member believe he or she has a personal bias? Does any commission member have any ex parte contacts? Does any commission member may decide? Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. This is a setback reduction. Many setback reductions that you hear are things that first came across the counter to us as a request to approve something administratively, and sometimes I can approve these situations administratively. Reason I can't approve this one administratively is that encroachment in the rear would be increased by increasing the height of the building there. If, for instance, they were only raising roof on the front part of the building beyond 15-foot line, which would be a possible configuration of the house, then that's something I could have maybe approved administratively. But this increase is non-conformity, that takes it out of the realm of things that I can approve administratively. Hence the request for a setback reduction in this hearing. The rear yard is about a foot and a half from the line. Supposed to be 15 feet if it's new construction. The roof raising is within the height limits for this type of building, well within it, about three feet below. But it's that rear setback and the existing location of the house that gets it to you. You're familiar with the requirements for a setback reduction from your previous hearings. There, in the staff report, the only clear and objective one is the 40 percent lock coverage, and we're, we're good on that. The rest of this is explained in drawings in here. You do have two requests, actually, from the two attorneys representing nearby property owners for a continuance. This is the first evidentiary hearing, so you're, you are obligated to continue the hearing. You can, the simple way, which you've done many times in the past, is just to continue it to your next regular hearing, which is July 27. You can also do a more complicated one, where you take oral testimony tonight and close the record for oral testimony and accept written testimony on a schedule and come back in July and render a decision at that time. So it's kind of your choice as to how you want to handle that. That's all I have.
I guess I've got a question that you can tell me, guys, and hold this off for somebody else. I went back and looked, and if I understand correctly, I couldn't tell by looking at the building clearly, is it the case that the, the roof level on the upper floor really all, would require a person of ordinary height to crouch down a lot? It said something about the inspector.
Yeah.
Why, shoulder height, something like that?
Yes, and oddly enough, I, the building official and I have actually been in the house when we did a inspection for a short-term rental for this, and it's, it's not so much the head height in the room upstairs, head height in the stairs going up to that room that's a problem, and that this is a solution to that problem. You really, well, I'm a, perhaps taller than average myself, but the building official is of average height, and, you know, he's cranked his neck down to get up and down the stairs. There are also kind of a twist at the bottom without a landing, and there's a plate glass window next to it. Those are code problems for us for the short-term rental, and that's not before you tonight, but the raising the head height on that staircase is something that needs to be done for short-term rental purposes. that needs to be done for short-term rental purposes, if we want to go that way. But, yeah, it's true, that head height is really low and subsan, really substandard.
How did, how did they get a permit in the first place?
I don't know the answer to that, I believe those improvements were done quite some time ago, possibly before Kansas Beach was an incorporated city.
Your improvement is?
That's improvements. That work was done some time ago, let's say it that way.
Well, to have a legal second story, doesn't it have to be seven feet?
I don't know the building codes on that point.
I was going to ask a similar question, but I'm not here to have an answer to that.
That's quite possibly the case.
So, as a voucher, we can't count an upstairs that doesn't have the height to it?
That's why we want to change it. Can I say, if we, if we don't, I mean, if we put, you know, continue this and close testimony, that, I mean, it sounds to me like there's some people who do want to speak on this, possibly the attorneys representing the opponents, and so I think if we were to close, to take testimony tonight and then close it, we'd be foreclosing them from making any kind of oral statements, which I don't think is.
Yeah, and I'm just kind of laying out the, the minimum and the maximum, the minimum you have to do under the statute is to take written testimony for seven more days, but you obviously can do more than that, and that would get kind of the other end, but it's where you just continue.
To me, it's a percentage, you continue to the last opponent and do it the next time, rather than do it twice, and then, you know, then you better love them to train for the first section.
At the same time, there are people who came here probably to accept it.
Got to come back again.
They would come back, probably anybody. I believe if I was involved, I would, you know.
Okay, I'm going to suggest a resolution to that, and we welcome opinions from anybody up here, and certainly including Mark. I'm thinking of asking whether there is someone here who has a, a strong preference for speaking this evening rather than being just included in, in the, in the hearing that we're clearly going to have next month. And anybody think that's a bad idea, to ask that question, people present? Okay. Sir?
I have a strong opinion. But can I ask you, before he speaks, before he speaks?
Only, only on that issue.
If he speaks tonight, is that foreclosing from speaking at the next hearing?
Well, I can't because I'll be in Washington, D.C., so that's why I have a strong opinion about tonight.
Okay, at, at this instant, you're only speaking to the issue of, of speaking tonight, and I think you've done that sufficiently that I will say, yes, you may speak tonight. Now I'm going to go through, through my rigmarole here. Are you the applicant?
Pardon?
Are you the applicant?
No, I'm a neighbor.
Okay.
If you have a chance, go ahead and say. Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I'm interested in party.
So, my plan is, we're going to go through all the steps here, take, take testimony, ask questions and so forth, and then continue it to next month. Anybody have a problem with that?
You have a question, though? If someone testifies tonight, do they get to say the same thing over again next time?
Well, I won't be here.
I know that.
But, but there may be other people who would like to speak tonight. If I had my Roberts rules of order here, I might have an answer, I think, if it's seeming unnecessarily and unproductively redundant, I would certainly be inclined to say, thank you, but we've already heard that.
But not only that, we now propose to speak more than once. So essentially, it's an extension of the.
Well, if it allows this gentleman to be able to speak tonight, I think it's worth listening to some repetition next time. I really, really think, if he's going to Washington, D.C., he should be.
I think he should speak, I'm just wondering that, I just wanted to have a ruling from the chair, that if you say your piece tonight, if, let's say you're a proponent, he's obviously an opponent.
Right.
If you're a proponent and want to go through the whole thing tonight, are you going to go through it again at the next meeting? The same, the same.
I'm comfortable with saying no.
Okay.
Say, you can give a praisey of what you did tonight, but, but don't, don't give the whole, you know, enough to remind us of what you said.
You should not assume.
Oh, maybe you're.
Don't assume that.
Okay, I don't know what you are, but this is, no one's objecting, no one's objecting to you speaking.
You're not ready.
Okay, moving on. Yes.
Okay.
Is there a presentation by the applicant?
I'm representing the applicants.
Okay, that's for me.
What's up? Well, I don't necessarily know if I have a full presentation, and I gave you guys the answers to the questions, and it looks like there's a couple opponents that I just saw.
Name and mailing address.
Letters for. My name is Jamie Regge.
That's right, sir.
Regge, W.R.E.G.E., and my mailing address is twenty-nine sixty-four Highway one-on-one North in Seaside. Am I being redundant talking about what this project is to you guys, since you've already seen it all, or? Okay. The, the ceiling heights that you guys were discussing before, it basically goes from five feet to seven feet, is what it does in a trapezoid. So at the exterior wall, goes up five feet, angles to seven, cross and then back down, which I believe the code, you need to average seven feet for living space.
Okay.
This wasn't the original intention with the clients, they had a raccoon and rat damage, and we had to open up sheet rock and get rid of their fur and corpses, and they had damaged some plumbing, there was a bathroom upstairs, and we had to open up the area up there. After we opened up all the sheet rock, and we brought a building official in to talk about it, they can't put the plumbing back here, and you can't do this, and so, you know, I talked with the clients about, you know, what your options were, and I said, well, the best thing would be to just make this up to code, you know, this bathroom's been up here for, like this, for, we don't know how long, it was there sixteen years ago when they bought it, and the county maps describe it as a four-bedroom, three-bathroom. So, this is where they are at this point. If you guys have any questions, I can answer.
So I was wondering, Jamie, on the, the change of the roof line, is that just on the west end of the roof that's there now, or does it encompass expanding that new roof line onto the east side of the house? I'm looking, I'm looking at the country, so both ends, both east and, east and the west end of the roof line, is that, so it's going to be a different configuration?
There is, no, it's just going up in the square, I, I don't know if you, if you guys.
If you look at this picture.
Actually have this picture?
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, this picture has a center section highlighted.
So it's on the front of the house, which appears to be almost like a dormer sticking out with that, that pool area, the rating?
Yeah, um, yes.
It's not the middle, two-thirds, except.
Yes. This spot right here, which is the roof line in the middle, is what's going up. Now, I believe they're five feet, and we're proposing to raise three feet, we were bringing them to an eight-foot ceiling, but we could just bring them to a seven-foot, if code would allow that to be. There's no, they're not bringing the roof up for any reason to, you know, create a better view or anything like that, they just want to comply. So we're just trying to find the best way that we can make the upstairs be in compliance.
I, I would suggest that you, when you come back next month, that you explore that a little more, because I, frankly, I, my inclination is against what, what you have proposed, uh, proposed, and it's, it's possible that if you were looking for something more modest, that it would be better received. Bill Robinson's.
Okay.
One thing I thought was interesting is that the appraiser says that the improvements are conforming and fit the size. So at the time that this property was purchased sixteen years ago, the appraiser is saying that the improvements, which means the house, is conforming.
So that was in what year?
Two thousand and one.
Yeah.
But one thing I.
I don't think I've heard of an appraiser.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, he's from Newburgh, I was going to get some of the new local, but anyway. Also, it seems to be a substandard lot.
Yes, it's twenty, little, like twenty-six hundred square feet, I think.
So you don't have much room to do anything?
No. No.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there presentations by proponents? Sir?
I don't have a presentation, I'm here by accident, I didn't realize this hearing was going to be here today, got a letter in the mail, I'm a neighbor, I own one-two-seven Orford, which is the property directly to the east.
Name and address.
I am John Backus, mailing address, one-nine-three-seven Northwest Tivoli Lane, Portland. Also own one-six-eight Orford, which is directly across the street from the house. So, obviously, kind of surround them a little bit, so I have one question that escaped me. The variance they're applying for is a setback to the rear. His, the questions you're asking him for a route to the front, so I'm confused about that. And the first question I have is, what is the existing setback of the house?
I, I think you're laboring under a difficulty that you don't have a paper route that we do.
Just a simple question, what is the setback they have now? It's not, it's not fifteen feet, it might be five at the most.
I can answer both of your questions.
They might be asking to move a, a half, one and a half feet, two feet?
With one and a half feet from, from the line.
No, how much are they asking to change it?
Nothing, nothing. The, the reason that they have to ask permission for this is that even though they're not changing the setback, they're increasing the amount of space in the building that is approaching the setback.
So what he was talking about, the roof raised in the front of the house, is really not what we're talking about?
No, they're going to raise the whole thing, if I understand correctly.
And, and what I'm going to say to this group is, somebody that owns a house across the street, next door, I think that it's a great idea, it would maximize their idea of what they want to do, which is turn the left-hand part into maybe a little studio they could rent, the two of them could occupy a space that's comfortable to retire in, will have zero impact on me and my wife, which is not all sides, but we're the most impacted, and I would say, what they want to try to do is make it a little bit nicer in the neighborhood, make it easier for them to live in. So, for what they want to do, I'm a proponent. That's all. And I didn't have any idea I would be here today, but it just accidentally, we got a gigantic water bill, which, and the guy was just like, we're trying to sort that out, but, anyway, that's why I'm here. Thank you for hearing me.
Before, I have a question.
Yeah.
Clarifying, I don't remember what the house members were there, is, is your house the, the one immediately in one from?
No.
The housing question, or two, two?
I'm immediately east.
Yes.
It's the little cabin that was on my cabin tour.
Okay.
And then the one straight across the street from that.
Yes.
Kind of the bigger one, that's been around like, like around two thousand, built up. So we've been there a whole time.
Okay, my, my recollection is that the, that the house that's two over is high enough that its view would probably be impacted, but your house is low enough that it's already as impacted as it's going to get.
Yeah, and for.
Again, I'm not trying to quarrel with you, I'm trying to clarify in my.
Well, and that, that's a good point, because as an aside, we bought that little cabin that's adjacent to it, I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, and it was built in nineteen forty, now it's on the historical thing, and it was literally falling down, and we wanted to add exactly ten square feet to make the left side of it go straight back versus jogging in, but same thing, the substandard lot, and we had to hire an architect, David who we heard earlier, go up in front of this group and spend quite a bit of money to end up with a cabin that looks exactly like a cabin beach cabin. So it worked out okay, but it was a lot of work and a lot of frustration and a lot of money to do, and the reason we wanted to add one foot was so that we could get a queen bed into the second bedroom, and we couldn't do it because the existing Raymond, Ray Barlow, whatever his name was, said no. And we came up and he, twice, no, zero, so. I'm just saying small things, like our neighbors are trying to do, it's like, what they want to do is make a little place where they're comfortable, it shouldn't be up to you guys to say no.
Thank you.
And it's our neighborhood, so, and we're fine with it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there presentations by other proponents? Are there presentations by opponents?
Yes.
Your honor.
I've got some copies I want to hand out to each one of you, please hand it this way, and, let's see, I've got some photos, and this is just a copy of a statement that my attorney wanted me to read, to get on record today, after these are passed around. And, are you a listener? Oh, Michael. Dean said, he sent me something else, a copy of this this morning, so I just wanted to make sure you had a copy. Okay, I'm just going to read what you guys have in front of you. Members of the planning commission, my name is Michael McCollough, my mailing address is one-three-four-two Northeast one-sixty-third Avenue, Portland, Oregon, nine-seven-two-three-zero. My family.
My family owns the house of one two three Orford, two, two doors east of the subject property. I request that the record be held open or the hearing continued under O R S one nine seven seven six three. We've already discussed this part. And and then I have three points to make. First, the proposal does not meet the requirements of C B M O seventeen dot six four dot zero one zero dot A dot two. Because the proposed addition to the applicant's duplex will obstruct a significant view of the ocean from our house. The obstruction is more than if the duplex were built as required by the zoning district. I have brought photographs of the view from our house. The dup- the duplex could be several feet taller and still conform to the zoning district, but it would also be thirteen feet farther to the north and would leave much more of a view of the ocean from our house. Second, the usual way to remedy a nonconformity is not to enlarge it, but to reduce it. The applicants have told you they have taken the inside of the duplex down to the studs. So the staircase could be moved to a location with adequate headroom without raising the roof over two thirds of the house and increasing encroachment into the required setback. The applicants aren't responsible for the existing nonconformity, but they haven't satisfied the requirements to make it larger. Third, as the letter from the city in the file shows. The ceiling height is an issue only because the owners of the duplex have converted it from long-term rental into short-term rental. The city's letter states that the headroom would not be an issue if the duplex units were still being used for long-term rental. In two thousand and one, when the applicants, applicants bought the duplex. Vacation rental licenses were not transferable when a rental was sold. If you deny their request, you are not causing them to lose any of the right that they would have expected to have when they bought the duplex. Thank you for considering our objections.
Any questions for this?
This is the letter your attorney wanted you to read into the record.
Correct.
Um, so you're renting out both of your clients or renting out both sides of the duplex on as short-term rentals or?
Um, I'm the owner of one two three Orford.
Oh, the.
Two, two lots to the east.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm representing the McCormick's at one two three Or- Orford.
Okay, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other opponents? I can answer a question. Uh, I think we're gonna, we're gonna cut to that. Is there a staff response at this time?
Um, no.
Now you're up.
Oh, can I subtract a question, staff question? So is that, is, do you understand that is correct though, that to remain a long-term rental, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be out of conformity?
Um. I'm not sure about the second part of that. The, 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 the letter that he was citing was based on the fact that we don't inspect long-term rentals here.
Oh.
So you could rent a non-conforming.
Oh, okay.
Building on a long-term basis. The reason we distinguish between long-term and short. One of the many reasons we distinguish in long and short term is that. And we do inspect short-term rentals is the notion that uh these are visitors who are only gonna be in the house for a short time. They're going to arrive possibly at night, possibly after evening on the town and you don't want them to have to adapt to a non-conforming building. A long-term renter, on the other hand, will be able to kind of burn the quirks of a building just the way uh a homeowner would learn quirks of their own home. And but you can't expect that of a short-term rental.
Okay.
So that's the reason we inspect one and not the other.
If, I'm I'm not sure that I've got the vocabulary right, but it sounds as though the upstairs is not habitable space. If if the ceiling is too low.
It's non, it's not compliant space.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there, there's a subtle distinction there. It's, it's a, it's treated space, it's heated, it's accessible. You don't have to go through a trapdoor to get to it like an attic for kids.
You just have to shrink down the stairs. I mean, no, I mean, that's not.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It just, it doesn't, that's doesn't comply with the short-term rental standards.
Yeah, okay. That, it, it may seem as like a subtlety, but it makes a difference to me if, if it.
Yeah.
If it is considered habitable space, even if it's not compliant.
If it is a subtlety, but it is. It is an important issue. You're right. It's a distinction between how we handle short and long-term rentals.
Why do you raise that question as a mystery? It's, they're not doing it because they want it for a short-term rental. They want to live in it. That's all. Sorry.
Representative of the applicant.
That was my answer. I was gonna say, the, the east side is not a, they're not trying to get a short-term rental on either of them. They're just. They just want, when we went up there, the bathroom walls weren't compliant, so we did the plumbing for living space. It's non-compliant living space. I don't think I brought up anything about short-term rentals. Um, or renting on anything. They aren't trying to get into the short-term lottery and have more density of traffic like that.
Why don't you come up to me? It's really clever. I got one question. Knowing, knowing that you or somebody are coming back next time. Uh. I couldn't tell from what we've got here, whether this. It's a very, of an idea that somebody else brought up and that is. Uh. Rather than, as, as long as what you're trying to commit to compliance with is the headroom for the stairway. Uh. Would it be structurally feasible to just raise the roof over where the stairway or stairways are?
Well, the stairway is one part. The bathroom is another part. When I brought the building official, you know, building official. But when I brought the building official there, that was another part that we're talking about. The headroom was slanted. And it didn't meet that seven-foot average ceiling height.
Uh-huh.
For that either.
It's my, I'm, I'm not sure if we can answer like this better than, I'm wondering whether.
Well, I just have a question because um this is a letter from the vacation rental location here and it says that um it's a vacation rental permit, right?
Um. There was a month-to-month person on the east side for the longest time.
I can shed a little bit of light on this.
Could you? I'm completely.
There's a, there's a letter in the record that we included in, in May two thousand and fifteen. They did have a short-term rental permit there and it was suspended as a result of a failed inspection. That was what Mr. Altman was referring to in his statement was this letter. It's in, it's in their material here in front of you. And so, yeah, it's not surprising that they haven't had short-term rentals in there since two thousand and fifteen because we suspended their license. So, yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if they rented that long-term since then.
To live in the house, just to, for them to live in the house, do they have to make these alterations?
Well, they might now because they've started this construction project. Um, it's. Once you kind of open these walls and things up and start working on, you do, you can't finish that project out of compliance. So, um, yeah, when they took out a building permit to do this work, they opened that door, so to speak, for code compliance. Had they not had the damage and did not need to do the renovations and.
And just wanted to live in it. They could just live.
They, they probably could have done that, yeah. When I was there in two thousand and fifteen, I, although I wasn't in a position to look for manual damage, but. We weren't looking at that at that time.
Okay.
Uh. Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so let's see, we got to the state. Did we do the staff response?
Yeah.
Okay. And. Does the applicant or proponent have anything at this point that they want to say? If you have something more to say at this time, now, now's your time.
Um, I would concur, um. I was in there before. The.
Actually, so, so because this is being recorded through these microphones and we'd like to capture that as far as.
This is very. I was in there before the installation of the raccoons. Was in there after that. It was clear there was no possible way that the building interior could be saved. They have to tear off the ceiling, they have to tear off the floor. At this point. The structure really is completely uninhabitable. Um, so that's how it is. Just as a month or two ago.
Thank you. Okay, we know that this is being contributed to next month. Is there anything else I need to do?
Just for the sake of the record, July twenty seventh at six o'clock P M. That will allow us to not have to re-advertise.
Sure, so. That matter is covered for today. Is there a motion to authorize the chair to sign the corporate order for the school?
Move.
Second?
Okay.
Can we prove it up by consensus? Any problems? Okay. Have to prove by consensus and. I did, I think I looked to see what was in the figure board. Pardon? Any comments or questions come next? I'm going planning items.
Doesn't impact your day-to-day work much, but we have hired a building official. He's on full-time. This is his third week here. So like I said, it's not somebody you'd see at meetings or. It doesn't have a lot to do with the work you do, but it certainly does have a lot to do with the work Alicia and I do. We're very happy that we now have him.
And what's happening with the city manager?
Brandt's last day will be, I believe, next week, end of next week and the search process has started. They should have a new city manager on board roughly four months later, so one sec, it'll be sometime like in October. Actually, Jason Sherman, our police chief, was here tonight because he will be the interim city manager. Um, although I tell him what you're doing all the time, he doesn't actually know, so he wants to see you in action tonight.
And I noticed that now you're, you're recommending approval or disapproval and that was because of the edict from. Brandt.
I wouldn't call it an edict, but yes. A regular one.
I call it edict, but.
I don't have to, but I don't understand. The basis of, of that edict or of the instruction. Since this body is supposed to come to a decision.
This body does come to a decision, yeah.
I'm only here in meetings.
I don't think anybody thinks you're so soft-minded as to be influenced by my recommendations, so. I'm not sure it's that big a deal, but if you want to see a different way out.
Well, I actually, I, I find it disconcerting, to tell you the truth. I do. Just because. It, it, I think it, it affects impartial, impartiality of the spot. I do.
I, I think in Reymar's name, the regular recommendation.
Reymar wrote the motions out for you, so.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, one, one question, something you said. I, I may have misunderstood it. My understanding was that uh. The new building official was working part-time for us and part-time for Manzanita. Is that an error?
Uh, he, he works full-time for us, but we sell fifteen hours a week of his time to Manzanita, so he is also the Manzanita building official.
I see. Thank you.
But he is a full-time Canada Beach employee.
Interesting. Thank you. Okay, that's an interesting way of.
Well, it's, it's the arrangement we've had with Seaside for three years now. Bob Mitchell's the Seaside building official, but we buy slices of his time to work in Canada Beach. So it's not an uncommon arrangement in a small town.
Okay, ready to be ordered? Anything else?
Oh, can I ask a question for, any news on Nicholson property?
I went up there um early in the week to just go by and I, I tried to do that every week and generally I've been able to and just check on progress and actually there hadn't been much in the ensuing ten days or so since I've last been there. Um, I had a conversation with the engineer about um. The next phase going forward. I also asked when the landscaping component of the wall would be continued. Didn't have an answer. You could get back to me. I haven't heard back yet.
So as far as your concern, is it your opinion that it's in compliance with all the plans?
Yeah, so far, um, that there's, that's a big caveat. We haven't actually signed off, done finals on uh anything yet, so.
All the, all the, all the things that the city council, they, they put a lot of conditions on.
Yeah, they have not violated those conditions. There, there's a lot to go still.
Because they haven't complied with them either.
Yeah, they haven't met them yet because some of them are just, they're, they're not to the point where they've had to yet. So they're, they're in compliance as we've seen them.
So it's not a living wall yet?
No, that's one of the, that's one of the things I wanted to see them get going on.
It's pretty dead.
It's a, it's not living. It's a zoning wall.
Well, and hasn't there a time limit on getting that done?
They have to have it done before we can sign the final inspection on it, so yeah, I think there is a time limit because that home at the end. It's kind of a cascading set of problems. The home at the end can't have its final inspection until the driveway's finally approved. The driveway can't be finally approved until the wall is finally approved. The wall can't be finally approved until the landscaping's in place, so it's kind of a, a cascading set of approvals that have to be met. And, you know, the, the wall actually went up relatively fast. The house, I doubt that it's gonna go up fast. It's gonna take months probably to build that house, so.
This is the, the one that's going where the other house was before?
Correct, in the, it'd be the northwest lot. Yeah.
Okay, any further matters of business? In general?
Thanks very much.